All right, I'd like to call to order the regularly scheduled meeting of the Tiverton Town Council Monday, October 27th. Please stand for the Pledge of Allegiance.
Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, to the Republic of Georgia, to the Constitution, to the Constitution of America, to the freedom and justice of our home.
Madam Clerk.
Counselor Camino.
Present.
Counselor Burke.
Present.
Counselor Janik.
Present.
Counselor Dean Madiris.
Present.
Counselor Edwards.
Present.
Counselor Paul.
Present.
Counselor Perry.
Present.
All present.
All right, thank you. All right, so consent agenda as listed. Would any members of the council like to remove any items from the consent agenda? Hearing none, I'd like to entertain a motion to approve the consent agenda as listed.
So moved.
Motion being seconded, any further discussion? Hearing none, all in favor. Okay, public comments. You guys grab them up. We're gonna make clerk go grab them for us. I'm trapped back here, so. Thank you, Madam Clerk. All right, so first up we have Pat Ford regarding Longplex. And Mr. Ford, if you could just state your name and address for the record, please, sir.
Excuse me, I'm sorry. Hi, my name is Pat Ford, and I'm with the Coalition Radio Network. We're an independent media company based in Providence, Rhode Island. You can find us on Admiral Street in Providence, Rhode Island. And I'm going to be speaking regarding, I guess, controversies surrounding what I'll call generically the expansion of the Longplex facility, and regarding, I guess, approvals being withheld to construct a vehicle storage center as well as a entertainment facility, potentially. My original intent in coming to Tiverton tonight was to follow up on a, I believe it was a true Rhode Island success story. Of course, I'm talking about Longplex. A year ago, the town of Tiverton, and I attended that town meeting, do not want to sell the property in question. And this is property directly adjacent to the current Longplex facility. Working with a brand-new town council and planning board, it's clear that the property was successfully sold, and the land deal was closed. Hearing that, I came to Tiverton fully expecting to see cranes in the sky. Instead, I see a small town where politics are again obstructing the growth of a local business. Mr. Long's existing businesses are already abooned to Tiverton. They provide property, sales taxes, and meal taxes. They are a family-friendly sports environment. They provide youth employment. Entertainment dollars from all over Rhode Island and Massachusetts arrive at the shores of Tiverton, greatly benefiting the local economy as well as town government. So allow me to stipulate to the following regarding his current project. Mr. Long is not seeking a tax stabilization agreement. The business in question is a clean business, not manufacturing, and there is no greenhouse gas or carbon footprint to be accounted for. Utilizing less-than-desirable space adjacent to nearby highways. It involves employment. There are no special requirements for electricity or water. It's a small business that's based here in Tiverton, new space for luxury car storage. And yet, at the same time, it appears that whether it be at the town attorney's office, Mr. Jones's office, somewhere in this tangle, for months, it's been tied up in internal conversations. To my knowledge, everything necessary to approve the project, particularly since the sale was approved, to go forward is in place. I will tell you, if I call Phil Gould in Lincoln, the town manager, if I were to call Brett Smiley in Providence, who I was with earlier today, or Chris Bochamp in Wunsacket, who's the mayor there now, not only would they send their economic development people to Tiverton, they'd probably hop in cars themselves to meet with Mr. Long and say, hey, if after all these years, all this litigation, all these costs, all this wasted time, all this expense that you've had to internalize isn't working out for you, are you tired of it yet? They would announce a ticker-tape parade to bring him to Wunsacket. I travel this state and go to town councils. I think I've been to every city and town in this state, and they are crying for businesses like this. The biggest obstacle facing economic survival in this state as a municipality is increasing what is a greatly diminished corporate tax base. Over the years that Longplex has been in business, I'm not aware of a single issue that's been brought to this town detrimental to the town. It has been nothing but a win-win. So I have to say to your town manager, your building inspector, your Department of Public Works, and any of the other elected, appointed, or self-appointed poobas in this town, what's the problem? And by the way, that's actually a question. It's not a proposition, it's not a discussion. What's the holdup? Anyone? Has anyone got here anything to say about this development that would prohibit this from going forward? Sir?
Mr. Ford, I was just gonna say, this time is meant for you to address the council, not open forum for the public.
Sure, okay. I'll ask you then. So what's the holdup?
This is the time for you to address us, but since it's not...
No, actually, according to the Rhode Island General Law, if you look it up, I'll be able to quote it to you, you're able to answer my questions. There's this myth that exists in local government that you can't answer questions. That's simply not true. And I can point out communities like Cumberland...
With all due respect, Mr. Ford, this is on the agenda later on, so...
Right, well, I'm asking you as a citizen of Rhode Island who has to pay extraordinary taxes, confiscatory taxes in this state, who's watching literally as we sit right now a state that's unable to afford even some type of intermediary engagement with the SNAP crisis that's about to hit this state like a tornado, I need to understand what is holding back this town from embracing this business. This is a dream business, and it sends a clear signal to anyone contemplating business in this state that the right thing to do is to perch right over the border in Massachusetts, take your money. Listen, I live in Cumberland. Same thing happens in Cumberland every day. People leave Cumberland and go to North Attleboro and spend a fortune. And so goes the sales tax, the meals tax, the property tax, all the different monies. I also understand that you have an issue here with financing your schools, like every community in Rhode Island. The cost of special education, increasing healthcare, all of that, that's not unique to Tiverton. So you would walk away from a business like this, or you would engage him in the Game of Thrones that seems to occupy most municipalities, rather than simply get out of the way and take the money. I go to town after town to listen to arguments about tax stabilization agreements. I'm not aware that this gentleman has, at any moment in his apparently fairly long history in this town, avoided anything other than full tax payment. So I guess I have to leave it out there. But if you're a voter in Tiverton, you have to take stock of the situation and say, what are people thinking? What's going...I mean, maybe tonight, when it comes up on the agenda, you can explain, or not you, maybe the head of the town's attorney, or the head of zoning, or planning, or economic, whatever they want to call it these days, can, as the great Vincent A. Buddy Shanty would say, come cocoa with the town and say, why did I decide to waste this guy's time for months tying up thousands of his dollars without any regard to the out-of-pocket expenses he has to routinely go through? Again, you have a moment. History is not going to be kind if you don't finally just get out of the way, embrace this business, or you could continue to send a signal to the rest of the state that, yeah, we're more concerned about our personal relationships, our personal biases, or how we feel about someone, rather than getting the heck out of the way and just taking the money. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Next up is Jamie French with liquefaction? Ms. French, maybe you can explain that when you come up there.
John, can I just respond? Yes, I can. I can respond. Yes. I want to respond to the gentleman that was speaking.
Not on the agenda.
No, he has, at a public meeting, if he has something to say, we have the right to respond back to the person who's speaking. Are you advising me against doing that?
Very limited response, Ms. French. This council is not allowed to speak.
That's not true, Todd. No, it's not. We never took a vote on it. We're allowed to speak.
Counselor Camino.
I want to...
Counselor Camino, but direct your responses to Mr. Ford. Sorry, Mr. Ford.
So, Mr. Ford, I don't...
I'm sorry? Okay. All right, so I guess, according to the solicitor, make this...
I am allowed to address the gentleman that is speaking. I don't have to address our president. That's not a true statement, though. Okay, so, Mr. Ford, I do not disagree with some of your statements, but the reason why I had put this on the agenda tonight is to find out and get to the bottom of why we don't have permits in place yet, right? So my understanding is, there's a process that we either follow, and I'm hoping to get a clear understanding tonight of the process that we are following. So hopefully, we can get to a determination on why a simple permit has not been issued yet. So we don't have to go back and forth what zoning said, or if the administrator had something to say, or zoning, or planning, or the building official. I'm hoping to find out the information tonight on how the processes work, and hopefully have an answer on why a permit is not issued. So, thank you.
Thank you very much. By the way, for the record, General Law 42-46-6. Thank you. Ms. French. And name and address for the record, as always.
Hi, Jamie French. I live at Craig Avenue, and I want to address liquefaction. I think I say it correctly. Anyway, that's when you are blasting in saturated soils. So the quarries blast, developers blast to make places site-ready. But when you do that in saturated soils, it creates movement of the ground. Now, in dry soils, you don't have as much of a shaking, but in saturated soils, you amplify that shaking by forcing the soil condenses and rock condenses, and it lifts the water table up out, which causes buildings to shake. And we're seeing a lot more blasting again, and at the last, last time it blasted, I recorded the comments to see where they were located of people complaining about feeling it, or waking up to it, or their dogs barking, and cracked foundations. And I saw it for up to 1.3-mile radius around the blasting site. That's a really large area, and that takes up thousands of homes. And we are not looking at this. This is, this is something where we, maybe it's either the intended or the unintended consequence of destruction of people's private properties, their homes. And I can't believe that we still allow this. And I would think that the town would, should hire a hydrologist to deal with saturated soils, north of Bogomash. The evidence that the Pecassit Cedar Swamp used to extend all the way to Mount Hope Bay. And over the years between, back in the early days, early records show that the Mount Hope, that Pecassit Cedar Swamp didn't stop at Fish Road. It went all the way to the bay, which would explain why, when I was growing up, the whole Robert Gray Randolph neighborhoods were so swampy. And the farmers were allowed to dry out some of that, and then the developers came in and piped all the underground swamp streams, brooks, and wetlands under, and they're coming back. And so we have, we have this issue with saturated soils. We have no real drainage ways of doing it, and we're blasting these neighborhoods to have saturated soils, so that they're shaking. And so, to me, it just seems that it would be prudent for the town of Tiverton to hire a hydrologist to begin looking at these issues, and one of them being the blasting. Thank you.
Thank you. Yeah, at this time, I'd like to entertain a motion to take 9A out of order.
So moved.
Motion being seconded. Do we have any discussion? Hearing none, all in favor. Okay, at this point in time, I'd like to make a motion to go into closed executive session. Administrator Jones, round, General Law 42-46-5A2, litigation status update on IAAF Local 1703 versus Town of Tiverton related to firefighter overtime.
So moved.
Second. I need a second. Sorry. Seconded by Counselor Dean Madiris.
Oh, I'm sorry.
No, it's all good. Roll call, roll, I made the motion, Counselor Dean Madiris.
I would like to recuse.
Counselor Camino will be recusing. Counselor Burke, yes?
Yes.
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 All right, we are now in closed executive session. For those at home, we should be no longer than five, 10 minutes, right? Five minutes. We're gonna go to the trustee room. Thank you. You guys rolling? Okay, so we are now back from executive session. The time is 7:29. I'd like to entertain a motion to seal the minutes.
So moved.
All right, motion being seconded. Any further discussion? Hearing none, all in favor. One abstention. Reporting out, a vote was taken in executive session, but the outcome of that vote cannot be disclosed due to pending legal matter. So, continuing on with the agenda, we have appointments and resignations. We have several reappointments, so we'll just go right down these things here. First up is municipal court judge. Term expires 10/31/2025, two-year term ending 10/31/2027. Michael B. Fort Jr., Esquire, CFE, requests reappointment. Since this is a reappointment, we do not need to interview for our policy, and there is only one applicant. So, any questions or... Move approval by Counselor Burke. Do I have a second? Seconded by Counselor Perry. All those in favor. Okay. Next up is Economic Development Commission. Five-member board, four-year terms, one vacancy. John Hardman, 1886, Main Road, requests appointment for a term ending 7/15/2030, and this is going to be subject to his resignation from the Budget Committee as Mr. Hardman present. There he is. Full disclosure, I did speak with Mr. Hardman about this, but, Mr. Hardman, why would you like to join the Budget Committee?
Yeah, John...
I'm sorry, not the Budget Committee, the Economic Development Committee. You're currently on the Budget Committee.
Yeah, two committees in two months, yeah. I promise I'm not running for dog catcher.
There you go. Not an elected position, but maybe one day.
So my background has been in finance, Silicon Valley, for 26 years, running businesses. I am now back in Rhode Island, living in Tiverton, and I work for the Rhode Island Commerce Corporation. So I do economic development for the state. I travel all over the country, telling people about all the good things in Rhode Island. I was in California all last week, and I'd like to do that for my hometown.
Wonderful. Any questions for Mr. Hardman? Okay, so, we need, motion to waive our policy to appoint. Motion being made, seconded by Counselor Dean Madiris. Any further discussion? Hearing none, all in favor. Okay, now we can... All right, so, second.
Second.
Motion made by Counselor Burke, seconded by Counselor Janik. Any further discussion? I have one. You will be resigning from the Budget Committee.
Yes.
Okay, just want to make sure. All right, so, all those in favor. Hey, congratulations, you're now on EDC, and you need to resign from budget.
Perfect. Thank you.
Welcome aboard, Mr. Hardman.
Thank you.
Thank you very much. All right, next is the Tax Assessment Board of Review. Three-member board, three-year terms, one vacancy. Carol Gaiman, 37 Neck Road, requests reappointment for a term ending 10/15/2028. Do we have a motion to reappoint?
So moved.
Motion being made, seconded by Counselor Perry. Any further discussion? Hearing none, all in favor. All right, Gaiman is back on again. Next up is Personnel Board. Five-member board, four-year terms, one vacancy. James Kamara, 1221 Crandall Road, requests reappointment for a term ending 10/15/2029. Do we have a motion, Mr. Kamara?
So moved.
Motion, motion to reappoint Mr. Kamara by Counselor Janik, seconded by Counselor Perry. Any further discussion? Hearing none, all in favor. Next up is Harbor and Coastal Waters Management. Nine-member board, two-year terms, three vacancies. We have Deb A. Hagan, 540 Naniquaket Road, requests appointment for a term ending 7/15/2027. Ms. Hagan, you have the floor. Same question as I had for Mr. Hardman, why would you like to join this board?
I was a member of the Harbor Commission from 2021 to 2023, and during that time, I was on the Harbor Management Plan Subcommittee. After my term, the other members of the Subcommittee carried on the work, and just recently, the last man standing resigned his volunteer position. So I've come to look at the Harbor Management Plan as a relay race, and I would like to, with your approval, pick up the baton and see it through.
Wonderful. Any questions for Mr. Ms. Hagan?
I just want to thank you, Deb, for coming back. Thank you, Deb, for coming back forward. I think you did a great job when you weren't on it before, and you certainly helped a lot to move the Harbor Management Plan forward, and I look forward to you helping to get it to the finish line.
That's great, thank you, because it will take a commitment on the part of the town council as well. There's a big part that you all play.
Deb, I was gonna say the same thing. You did a fantastic job last time, and I'm glad you're coming back.
Thanks, Denise.
Given that there are three vacancies, I'd like to entertain a motion to waive our policy and reappoint this evening.
So moved.
Motion being made by Counselor Burke, seconded by Counselor Perry. Any further discussion? Hearing none, all in favor. Okay, now I'd like to entertain a motion to...
Motion to approve, Deb.
All right. Motion being made by Counselor Burke, seconded by Counselor Dean Madiris to appoint Deb Hagan to the Harbor and Coastal Waters Management Board, term ending 7/15/2027. Any further discussion? Hearing none, all in favor.
Thank you.
Congratulations. Thank you for coming back. All right, next up, we have Library Board of Trustees. Seven-member board, three-year terms, three vacancies. Amy Lewis King, 73 Watermark Drive, requests reappointment for a term ending 10/15/2028. And Maureen Ann Iwansky, 526 Highland Road, requests reappointment for a term ending 10/15/2028. Do I have a motion to reappoint these two members to the Library Board?
So moved.
Motion being made by Counselor Paul, seconded by Counselor Perry. Any further discussion? Hearing none, all in favor. Okay, next up is the Housing Authority. We do this once every year, so, that's why there's so many of these. Next up is the Housing Authority. Five-member board, five-year terms, one vacancy. Jean Marie Durphy, or Jean May, Jeannie May Durphy, 2411 Main Road, requests reappointment for a term ending 10/15/2030. Do I have a motion to reappoint?
So moved.
Motion being made by Counselor Dean Madiris, seconded by Counselor Perry. All those in favor? Next is the Juvenile Hearing Board. Seven-member board, three-year term, two vacancies. Eugene Repoza, 413 Hooper Street, requests reappointment for a term ending 10/15/2028. Do I have a motion to reappoint Mr. Repoza?
So moved.
Motion by Counselor Paul, seconded by Counselor Perry. Any further discussion? Hearing none, all in favor. Opposed. Okay. Next up is the Litter Committee. Five-member board, four-year term, three vacancies. We have Victoria Revier, 258 Bridal Way, requests reappointment for a term ending 10/15/2029. And Jessica Cullinan, 21 South Lake Road, requests reappointment for a term ending 10/15/2029. Do I have a motion to reappoint?
So moved.
All right, and that's for both, yes?
Yes.
Okay.
Fantastic job.
Fantastic, okay. Any further discussion? Hearing none, all in favor. Okay, last item is Conservation Commission. Seven-member board, three-year term, three vacancies. Jamie Robin French, 48 Craig Avenue. We all saw her earlier at the podium. Requests appointment for a term ending 4/15/2028. This is a new appointment, so, Ms. French?
Jamie French, 48 Craig Avenue.
All right, why would you like to be a part of the Conservation Commission?
I think that conservation is the skeletal makeup of a community, and conservation of our infrastructure relates to conservation of our environment. And those are the issues that I've been involved with my whole entire life. And even in high school, I was selected to help plant a tree over at the high school.
Is the tree still standing? Is the tree still standing?
I don't know.
Look, check on her.
I would hope so, but I don't really remember which tree it was. It was a tree in with the other trees.
Well, we're gonna pick one and put a plaque on it for you.
And it was, it was a long time ago.
It's probably where the football field is.
Any other questions for Ms. French? All right, would we like to waive our policy and appoint this evening? Motion being made by Counselor Burke, seconded by Counselor Paul. All those in favor?
Thank you.
Not yet.
Just, just to...
Would we like, would anybody like to make a motion to appoint Ms. French to... All right. Motion being made and seconded by several of the counselors. All those in favor? Now you're on it. We can find that tree.
Plant a tree now.
We have to plant another one. Okay.
I think there's two maples that are due to go in by town hall.
There we go.
I'm gonna have to buy them a tree.
All right, next item on the agenda is Administrator Jones. Discussion and possible vote to authorize administrator to purchase two storage containers at DPW not to exceed 7,500. Mr. Administrator.
Thank you, Mr. President, members of the council. This was a last-minute addition, and I apologize for that. And speaking with the Recreation Coordinator, DPW, as you know, we have a lot of storage areas, or lack of storage areas, at the DPW garage. So what this plan would do, and it is my intention to go out to bid, and I know it's part of your backup, so we can get an idea of the storage containers, is to put at least two storage containers probably at the DPW garage. We haven't exactly determined a location for all of the recreation and the committees on just some of the storage that they have. In speaking with some of the committee members, they're keeping some of this stuff at their garages, at their homes, and I know the DPW had a challenge with the fire department with the small storage container that we have on Main Road at the south entrance in Naniquaket, because we had put the concrete beach tables in there. Fire department was doing training, DPW had to remove them. So, and I know this has been talked about for years, about just having a central location. So committees, recreation, DPW, can put all of these extra seasonal items in a safe, secure location. So that is the purpose of this, to authorize me to, and I plan on going out to bid, but as you can see from some of your backup, it's, they're around $3,000 to $4,000 apiece. So I'd want to go out to bid for at least two.
Counselor Dean Madiris.
Where would this come from? Are you gonna take it from council contingents?
Or with gaming. I don't know if this was calculated by, or we could take it out of municipal cap...
Well, we already did gaming, so...
We could take it out of municipal capital.
Oh, okay. Yeah, 'cause we have enough there, okay.
Counselor Janik.
Yes, ma'am. So, there will be two of them, or more?
At least two. I will coordinate with the DPW. It's a space issue, so I don't want to get too many of them, but I think at least two would be viable to store seasonal stuff from recreation, the beaches.
Recreation alone.
Exactly.
So we want it there because that's kind of more of a central location?
Yes, ma'am.
So we won't be going to Claudia Lanier's house to get baseball stuff?
Not for that.
So, so we think that two might be enough, or if there is a third one, will there be space for that?
Well, what I'd like to do is go out to bid and get an idea of how much they're going to cost, and if it's less than that, it comes within the budget, and we can maintain three in a location, then we could potentially get three. If it's going to be over that, then I'd come back to you.
Just, just by the looks of Stu's garage, you're gonna need at least one and a half.
Yes, ma'am.
All right.
Counselor Camino.
So, a couple of years back, and I'm not sure if this pertains to this, a counselor, was there a Counselor Cook, I believe, at the time? I don't know if she passed an ordinance on steel containers being for storage.
Oh, that was on private property. That was on...
That's what I'm asking, is there a difference between private property, town property?
Oh, yes. Yeah, zoning ordinances do not apply to the municipality.
Yeah.
Because I can tell you right now, the police department's in violation.
No, 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 and that was...
So the fire department.
No, and that was brought up at the time that the police had some there.
Yes, ma'am.
It was really specifically private property.
Yes, ma'am.
Counselor Burke.
Just in terms of the motion, we want to make sure we have it right, so, because this just says purchase two.
Yes, sir.
But in terms of location, I assume we're gonna put it as far away from sightlines as possible.
And at someplace that's flat and accessible.
Yep.
Yes, sir.
All right, with that, I'd like to entertain a motion to authorize the Administrator to purchase storage containers for DPW in an amount not to exceed 7,500.
So moved.
Second.
Okay, motion made and seconded. One pointed discussion. I explicitly dropped the number, the number two from there, so in case it winds up being three, if it's within the budget.
Thank you.
Any further discussion? Hearing none, all in favor.
Thank you.
Okay, next item on the agenda is Administrator Jones, discussion and possible vote to increase Town Hall furniture appropriation request from $25,000 to $33,000. Mr. Administrator.
So you can see as part of your backup, this was the allocation that was approved at the last gaming meeting for $25,000. We did receive the updated version of that from WB Mason, which is on the state master price agreement. And I'll take responsibility for it. In speaking with the sales representative, she kind of gave me a ballpark. We've dealt with her before, but what had added to this overall price was two things, the setup fees and the tariffs. So that was not included in the original estimate. So for that purpose, I'm requesting from you the upcharge of an additional $7,000, eight, excuse me, $8,000 to cover the cost of the furniture purchase, which was originally done.
Counselor Burke. Counselor Comito. Counselor Burke. Counselor Comito.
You go first. So I just want to note, so the total cost without the tariffs is about $31 and change?
Yes, sir.
So I want to note to the public that these tariffs are costing the town an additional $750 roughly.
Yep.
John, this would be coming, or Mr. Administrator, this would be coming from the gaming funds?
Yes, sir.
Because we already appropriated.
So for...
No.
For that discussion, we can, if we want to move on to the resolution, we could amend the resolution for this cost increase.
So, you know, to keep it simple, I would also request that you take this out of municipal cap. I know a lot goes into the resolution by the treasurer and with the solicitor. We have plenty of funding with municipal capital out of 640, 50, just to keep it, yeah, just to keep it 640. Municipal capital is 640, just to keep it cleaner. So this way, the resolution that's been prepared by the treasurer, by, approved by you, by the solicitor, any overage of the $25,000 municipal capital.
Counselor Comito.
I would like to see it come from municipal capital. I mean, the last meeting, I tried to add some stuff in with the gaming revenue. We took a quick vote, it all got shut down, so I don't think we should be adding anything to gaming revenue tonight. Just my opinion. I know it was, but now that the 25 was, so...
All right, so with that, I'd like to, Counselor Burke.
Thank you.
Counselor Comito.
Like to make a motion to increase the allocation for Town Hall furniture appropriation from $25,000 to $33,000 with the amount above $25,000 coming from municipal capital.
Second.
Motion made and seconded. That's account 640 for those at home. Any further discussion? Hearing none, all in favor. Okay. Next item on the agenda is discussion and possible vote to approve FY 2025 Casino Revenue Appropriation Resolution 2025-0034. Do we have any discussion, or would somebody like to make a motion?
To approve it?
Yep.
I make the motion to approve?
I have a second.
Second.
Motion's been made and seconded. For discussion, yes, if you don't mind, Counselor Perry, I'd like to go first, if that's acceptable. So I'm gonna read a letter that I drafted. This is addressed to the residents and voters in the town of Tiverton, and simply states in regards to the casino gaming revenue allocation for FY 25-26. So, "In the wake of our previous meeting surrounding allocating casino funds for capital expenditure, there were some questions raised. I'd like to take this time to provide some context around the town's history with casino gaming revenue and how those dollars have been allocated. In response to the COVID pandemic, the council wisely chose to implement a process for allocating casino dollars that didn't allow the council to allocate funds the town had not yet received. Since that ordinance was adopted, the town has allocated and spent $11.11 million to various projects. The school department's share to date is 5 million, 5.379 million, or 48.38 percent. This does not include the $1.198 million a prior council allocated to cover pre-existing time payments to make room in the regular budget to keep Fort Barton School in operation, a school that the school committee regrettably chose to shutter under a year later. Despite these efforts to fund the schools, often at the expense of the municipal side, i.e. our police, fire, DPW, road repairs, et cetera, the school committee chair used her time at the last meeting to criticize the decisions this council has made regarding allocations for the fiscal year. In some sense, the school committee chair's comments were deceiving to the public. As the council and administrator were very clear that, that some of their asks, the answer wasn't no, it was just not yet. We have asked the schools to provide sufficient backup, including detailed estimates and bids for major projects to avoid the debacle that occurred, with the high school locker room project coming in significantly over budget and necessitating additional casino dollars to be allocated well after the project's deficit was known to the school committee and not communicated to the town council. Section 407 of the town charter outlines the powers and duties of the town council. In section 407, it states, "The council shall develop, publish, and annually review and revise long-range goals, objectives, and strategies, including but not limited to town services, capital improvements, and maintenance, equipment, and personnel, and staffing. This council's obligation under the charter is to make determinations for the entire town, not solely one department. We do not view one department as more deserving than another, nor do we pit one department against another. Beyond the allocations made this current fiscal year, I want to remind everyone in town that in addition to being allocated almost 50% of the casino money to date, in the last fiscal year, the schools saw fit to expend an additional $1.2 million more than they were allocated in the budget." This issue, in my opinion, hearkens back to a phrase a former school committee chair used on many occasions. "For the schools, there is no limit," referring to the money they need to operate. Unfortunately for the schools, they are not the taxing authority. And while there may be no limit to the dollars they can spend, for the town taxpayers, our constituents, there is a definitive limit on how much we can tax. I do not make these comments lightly, as I firmly believe we are one town, not two competing entities. I take the role prescribed in the charter very seriously to work towards offering and approving valuable services, of which a viable and successful school system is one. I would encourage the school committee chair to actively walk back her statements from the last meeting to restore a critical partnership with the town as we look to fix the school's budgetary issues and ensure that Tiverton moves forward for the benefit of all Tiverton's residents." Thank you. Counselor Perry.
Ditto.
Any other discussions? Counselor Burke.
Thank you, Mr. President. I won't begrudge opinions being spoken. I do have a hard time with trying to use opportunities like this to continue to have splits. But I want to speak to, and you'll see this in the kind of times, so I'm gonna paraphrase most of it, but I sent a letter to this kind of times today, because if you noticed, they had a little piece on our last meeting, and the headline was "Tiverton Cuts $1.1 Million in Schools Requesting Gaming Funds." So just my opening paragraph, "The language used in news reporting plays a crucial role in shaping public perception. The choice of words by journalists and editors can influence readers' understanding of events or decisions, sometimes resulting in misleading impressions or reinforcing divisive perspectives." The president outlined some of the monetary aspects, the percentages, I'm not going to go into that. He also outlined that we, as the council, are the responsible body for making sure that we meet the needs of the whole town, and the whole town being both the municipal and the school committee side, the school side. And I'll just leave you with the analogy that I use, whether you like it or not, it's what it is. To clarify with an analogy, so first off, let me go back. We did not cut money from the schools. It was a request, just like the towns, the municipal departments asked for about $5 million, I believe. They weren't funded up to that, not even close to that $5 million. So anytime you request money in a budget, that's what it is. Now, if we were cutting a position that's already there, that's a cut. But modifying a request is not a cut. So my analogy, if a child requests a $50 weekly allowance and provides justification, but the parent determines that $15 a week is appropriate based on their financial situation, it would be inaccurate to describe this as a reduction in an allowance that was never previously granted. Rather, it reflects a balanced decision made in light of available information and resources, and that's what we did. We made our balanced decision. You might disagree with it, but we never cut anything from the schools. And I, for one, would like us to move forward and do our best to work together, knowing that we're not always gonna agree, and knowing that the decisions around money, the allocations, come from this body.
Counselor DeMaderis.
Mike, I do agree that we need to move forward and be positive. We have new administration over there, and I was really hoping that we could move forward, but her statements the other night was unacceptable. They were not true, and that really bothered me. And I think it's very appropriate that we send a letter to this kind of times from the whole council, and I like John's letter, because it needs to be explained. She acted like she, we really did not give them enough money. And if everyone remembers, we gave them every penny they asked for for safety. We, every single lock, all the safety issues, we addressed. We, we've given them more than half. And so this year, we just decided that we needed plows, and we needed a fire engine, and I think it was inappropriate of what she said at that meeting. And I think we should respond to it, and hopefully can move forward, and I hope she's watching, and we want to work together. But when somebody does what she did the other night, we need to respond.
Mr. President, one more time.
Counselor Perry.
Or unless another counsel...
Counselor Perry.
Thank you. I was at that school committee meeting two weeks ago, and I did get up and speak, and I misspoke. That was the PDA coming out from me. I said 65%, and the real number, I believe, with the 1.2 million, is more like 53% that they received from the casino money. As far as moving forward, I do meet with Chris Haskins once a month, and I think we're making progress with, between me and Chris. I don't know about with the school committee total. And I would just like to say, she made a reference into how we spend our money. I think she should really look at her own house and see how they spend their money. They're the ones that have a deficit, and we don't. Thank you.
And to clarify, Counselor Perry, it'd be 59.19%, including the Counselor Comito.
So, yeah, I mean, I agree with everything that's being said up here today. From their chair, I don't see any of her actions wanting to work with the town council. I think it's clear, it's obvious, and all the people have to do, and the constituents, is just sit and watch their meeting. You will see it clear for yourself. We don't need to tell you. It's clear and obvious of what her thoughts are on working with the town council, in my opinion. I've been to a couple of meetings. I've tried to speak and been shut down. So that's not working with the town council at all. So hopefully, Mr. Perry can keep the ball rolling with their new administration, the superintendent, and we can channel things that way, I'm hoping. Thank you.
Counselor Janik, you're the only one who hasn't said anything yet. Would you like to?
Just not to belabor the point, but we are one town, we have one pot of money, and we need to use it wisely throughout the whole town. It's not an us and them, it's what we, where we see the needs are. So I'm hoping that we will go forward and continue to work collaboratively.
Now, it isn't here for vote, but I would, if John is sending this letter, I would like to be added to it, if that's okay with him, and I'm not sure if the rest...
Mr. Solicitor.
Do we have to wait? We have to wait until the next meeting?
In lieu of a vote, could I just offer any counselor who also wants to sign, they may sign it?
Outside of the meeting.
Yes, okay.
Outside of the meeting, perfect.
Perfect.
Thank you.
That's what I, all right.
So when we get to the end of the meeting, if any counselors would also like to sign on, I did leave six signature lines here for everyone, so. All right, we do have a motion on the floor and a second. Any further discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor. Resolution passes. Next item on the agenda is Tiverton Planning Board, William Gerlach, discussion and possible vote to schedule and advertise public hearing on proposed amendments to the Tiverton Code of Ordinances, Appendix A, zoning, several articles as listed. This ties in with the next item on the agenda, so this is purely for advertising purposes. I'd like to entertain a motion to advertise those sections as requested by the planning board.
So moved.
Motion's been made by several and seconded by Counselor Perry. Any further discussion? Just for advertising, yes, sir. Hearing none, all in favor. Okay, next item on the agenda is Tiverton Planning Board, William Gerlach, discussion and possible vote to schedule and advertise public hearing on proposed text amendments to the Tiverton, town of Tiverton Comprehensive Community Plan in Chapters 3 Planning Concepts, 3.1, Section 3.1, and Chapter 5 Land Use Plan, Section 5.5 Future Land Use. This is, again, just for advertising, so I'd like to entertain a motion to advertise as requested. Motion by Counselor Janik, seconded by Counselor Perry or Paul. I heard you're... Counselor Perry, thank you. It's somewhere out on my left. All right, any further discussion? Hearing none, all in favor. Okay. Chief Costa, discussion and possible vote to appoint Captain Michael Miguel as Deputy Police Chief and approve contract and fiscal impact statement. Chief. Welcome. I think we all know Captain Miguel, so...
He's here, if you'd like to invite him up.
All right, by all means, if you'd like him next to you.
Sure.
Yeah, we hope he does.
We hope that's where he comes in at the end of the night, right? Good evening.
Hi.
So, thank you for having us. The captain was hired in year 2000. He has 20, almost 26 years of experience. He's held every rank of the Tiverton Police Department, Corporal, Sergeant, Detective Sergeant, Lieutenant, Lieutenant, Captain, has been the interim Deputy Chief. That was important. He is a valued member of the department. He is currently in charge of and has put forward the new state's RMS system, the records management system, and has done a great job taking on that program and pushing that forward to the department to making sure that we're all trained. We had two possible candidates for this position. One did chose not to apply, leaving the captain with his seniority and experience. I think that that was a no-brainer. I fully support and hope that he will too, the appointment of Captain Michael Miguel to the position of Deputy Police Chief.
Hey, do we have any questions from the council, or like to entertain a motion to appoint Captain Miguel as Deputy Police Chief and approve the contract and fiscal impact statement that we were provided? Motion by Counselor Paul, seconded by Counselor Perry. Any further discussion? Hearing none, this is an easy one. Captain, you're getting, oh, I'm sorry, deputy.
Thank you very much.
All those in favor? Congratulations.
Thank you very much, thank you.
So I would hope that we can have a, after the contract is reviewed with the Administrator, that we can have a signing of the contract and maybe on the next agenda for a swearing in, maybe the next council meeting, if that's possible.
If you, if you'd like to request it, I'd like to honor it.
Putting it out there right now, so that's the request.
My wife would greatly appreciate it.
Thank you.
Thank you very much. All right, don't go anywhere there, Chief. Next up is discussion and possible vote to approve patrol officer's lateral hire under reimbursement, Rhode Island General Law 42, 45270, 2025, House 5950A, and Senate 0849A, and the number not to exceed $30,000, but I believe we're gonna potentially amend that number.
Chief. So I've, just for the record, we have checked in, as many police officers as the town of Tiverton has lost, we do not have any credits in the bank for any reimbursement, although I believe we should. We do not. But it's nice to hear that we are now actually looking at officers want to come to Tiverton, and they want to come here. So we have an applicant from the Little Compton Police Department who is looking to transfer here. I have spoken to Chief Rains, and he has very graciously agreed to supply all the information and the... Background checks, university, everything that goes along with the bringing in a lateral transfer. But that cost is expensive, and it comes out to $33,636.95. That number comes from the Leagues of Cities and Towns. We had to put all that information forward. It was agreed on at a meeting of the Leagues, and that is the dollar.
Thirty-three, you said?
Thirty-three thousand, $636.95. The police department is currently budgeted for 32 police officers. Right now, I have one officer that is out on a medical leave, one officer that is out on suspension, and we are, have two vacancies, not including the two that are in the academy right now. So my request would be to hire this individual from Little Compton. He comes with great reviews from Chief Rains, and that will help push our process along, knowing that we are also shooting to try and hire somebody for the December Academy, for the Winter Academy.
Chief, you have the money in your salaries budget to cover this cost?
That is my plan, is to pay for it out of salaries account.
Any questions from the council?
I have.
Counselor Perry? I always start to the right, so...
You can go start to the right.
Well, then we'll go all the way down the line. We'll start with Counselor Comito and work back this way.
Chief, so he would have to do just field training with the department for how many weeks?
So the department that he's coming from is currently using the IMC system, so... So, the department that he's coming from is currently using the IMC system, so, which is the old system that we had, transferring to the new system, he has not seen this yet. It's new to the Tiverton Police Department, it's new to all of us, so we're still learning it as well. My goal would be to shoot for somewhere between a six and eight-week training period. That would put him on every shift, get him the experience that he needs, and obviously, he is an investment, so I want to make sure that he is very ready to go before we just put him out in the road. But I would be shooting for that time.
Counselor Burke or Janik?
Just a point on the agenda, it says not to exceed thirty thousand, and the actual cost is thirty-three and change, so we'll just need to...
Yeah, in the motion. Counselor Perry?
Yeah, I have two questions. You said you had two in the academy, when are they coming out?
They graduate, I believe, the Friday before Christmas.
Okay, great. And my second question is, on this lateral transfer invoice, probationary salary, is that while he was working there?
Yes.
So he worked there, he served them, and we're gonna pay...
Correct.
Eighteen thousand for him working there?
And I can tell you, Mr. Perry, I see where you're going with this, I completely agree with you, but that is what the law and how it was written, but...
Chief, is that the six-month academy, though?
That is his time that he has spent in the academy.
Oh, in the academy?
Yes, correct, yes.
Not on the street?
No.
We would have to pay that anyway.
Yes.
That's fine, then. I just want to make sure we're paying for him driving around Little Compton.
I don't disagree, but I still look at it where he was employed by them and the services were there.
I look at it that way also, but I'm a little happy that we're not paying for him riding around.
Agree.
I would just add that the unfortunate position, the more fortunate position we find ourselves in, is that Tiverton is now a desirable place for police and fire.
It is.
And, you know, this law would have benefited us greatly, you know, what, five, ten years ago, when we were being picked clean by the other municipalities, but unfortunately, you know, we're now the desirable place to be, so I, you know, I think it's a good thing for us, so...
I think that's because we have a new chief.
Yeah.
I, absolutely. Sir, I...
Dino!
Sir, I was, I was well-trained.
So with that, I'd like to entertain a motion to approve the police chief, police officer lateral hire under reimbursement, Rhode Island General Law forty-five, two seventy, in an amount of thirty-three thousand, six hundred, thirty-six dollars and ninety-five cents.
So moved.
To be taken from the salary line item from the police department. Okay, motion been made, do we have a second?
Yep.
Yep, seconded by Counselor Perry. Okay, any further discussion? Hearing none, all in favor. Alright.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thank you very much.
We actually, if we didn't move quickly, we would have had to wait until almost the New Year, so this helps out quite a bit. Yes, sir. Thank you.
Congratulations.
Thank you, counsel.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Next item on the agenda is Director Sylvia, discussion impossible vote to award the contract for by two minutes concrete crusher rental to A.J. Potter, Jr. and Sons. Mr. Director.
Evening, counsel. On the continuation of trying to clean up the DPW yard, we put out a request for bid for a crusher to make three-quarter inch gravel with some of the excess materials we have, and Mr. Potter was the only bidder, so we were looking to award him the bid.
Okay, any questions for the director, or do we have a motion to approve and award the contract?
So moved.
Counselor Janik, and then Counselor Comito.
Do we have a cost for this? It doesn't have a dollar amount.
Thirty-three thousand.
Thirty-three, thank you.
Counselor Comito.
That was my question.
Okay.
And maybe we can use this to repair some of the roads as a base.
Alright, so Counselor Perry made the motion, who seconded?
It was here, both of us.
I'm sorry. Alright, seconded by Counselor DiMedeiras. Any further discussion? Hearing none, all in favor.
Thank you, counsel.
Okay, next item on the agenda is Administrator Jones, discussion impossible vote to ratify contract for number-two heating oil to Casey's Oil and Propane. Mr. Administrator.
Thank you, Mr. President, members of the council. This is just the annual bid for the number-two fuel oil, and as you're aware, and just so the public's aware, we're part of a conglomerate, so this is done through the school department. It also includes Little Compton and all the municipal entities, so it's locked in at a two-dollar and seventy-five cents a gallon. It's my recommendation that you approve this contract.
Okay, any questions for the administrator, or have a motion? Motion by Counselor Burke, seconded by Counselor Comito. He got one in on you there, Counselor Perry. Any further discussion? Hearing, I would just have one point of discussion. I want to thank Mr. Andrade over at the school department for spearheading this search and for getting us what I believe is a phenomenal deal. All those in favor? Next item on the agenda is Administrator Jones, discussion impossible vote to authorize the administrator to enter into an agreement with the town's contracted engineer, par engineering, to conduct a feasibility study for DPW Recycling Center and Public Safety Complex using prior appropriations. Mr. Administrator.
Thank you, Mr. President, members of the council. So as you're aware, we do have a public safety committee, and as part of previous gaming revenue, there was fifty thousand dollars that was put aside to do a feasibility study for a future public safety complex in Tiverton. Also, as part of that, there was six hundred and fifty thousand dollars approximately that was put aside for a recycling center. And as you're aware, that recycling center was sold to Mr. Long with a five-year lease, so we're definitely on a time clock. I've spoken with the town's contracted engineer, which is par engineering, to put together a feasibility study in as part of your backup. So what I'm requesting from you is to use the fifty thousand dollars that was previously allocated for the public safety complex feasibility study, and also some of the six hundred and fifty thousand dollars that was previously allocated to start the feasibility study for DPW and recycling.
Alright, any questions from the council? Counselor Burke.
What is the estimated cost, then? Because I don't see backup on this. Am I missing it?
We already did a study, right, a long time ago. Did we pull that study?
So, the study that you'd be doing was for the current location, well, it was actually twice.
Yeah, but it mentioned at least four locations that were feasible.
Correct, correct. And I apologize that it's not part of your backup, but I do have estimates.
So my question is, why do we have to redo it if we...
So, I can probably address that. So, obviously, when we did the last study, the bulk of the industrial park was wide open. Since we've entered into contract on, or purchasing sales on three major parcels, the available land that's left, actually including the land that we entered into a P and L on for Mr. DeMello, there's not much land left, and I think it would be hoove us before we go and turn into additional agreements for us to look at what is available in the industrial park and what makes sense.
Well, I looked at it, and it looks like only one piece is left that they said would be a good piece for it.
Well, and also...
Because we sold, John is absolutely right. We sold all the other prime properties.
Yes, ma'am. But, so, and also, this concept of this feasibility study would be, so, what we're initially proposing without any guarantees at this point, is where the current DPW garage is located, moving DPW and the recycling center as one unit. So your DPW garage and your recycling center would be kind of like, all put together. That would open up the DPW land for a potential public safety complex. So we're kind of doing it in tandem, knowing that we're somewhat on the clock, well, we are on the clock, we're not somewhat, we are on the clock, with the recycling center. So this way, by moving DPW and recycling simultaneously, then that would open up that land for a potential public safety.
And it would also make no sense for us to do a feasibility study for a public safety complex if we don't have a lot to put said complex on.
Right, okay.
And Mr. Administrator, I know you were looking up the number.
So, exactly where, where is this, the land?
It would be...
So that, that would be part of feasibility? They'd be able to tell, part of the feasibility with par is to determine...
Is looking at different ones.
Correct. And also looking at DPW, DPW, public safety, and recycling, and to see what is feasible in Tiverton with a concentration on the current location on, on and near the industrial park.
Yeah, it would be, I think there is a piece of land there, some, in that area, you know, Patrick.
Yeah, there is.
Yeah.
For those, and...
And I think it was looked at.
And I know that the administrator has also received inquiries on the remaining land, so it's advantageous for us if we would like to be out of the game of land ownership in the industrial park to figure out where we're gonna locate this facility, so we know what is available for purchase.
So the basic surfaces, services, and I'll obviously send this out, par corporations shall be paid in a lump-sum fee for basic services of one hundred thirteen thousand, four hundred dollars. One thirteen, four hundred. That is broken down into the public safety feasibility study, forty-eight thousand, nine hundred. DPW feasibility study, forty-six thousand, eight hundred. A response time study for our public safety, fifty-six hundred dollars, and cost estimating of twelve thousand, one hundred, for a grand total of one hundred thirteen thousand, four hundred dollars.
And where are we getting this from? Oh, you already started.
It's the previous, Counselor Burke.
So, the first two were previously appropriate?
Correct.
The last two were not?
The cost estimating, that, thinking that is just part of the breakdown. And the one that was not part of the feasibility is the response time study. So that would be focused on mainly public safety. I would say, obviously, given the fire, the police department is there, it would be more about a fire department response time study, given that we have three fire stations in Tiverton. Would we feasib, the feasibility would show how many we shut down, and how many we keep open.
So because we've allocated the first two, we need to figure out, we need to add an appropriation for the last two.
Well, the fifty-six hundred dollars, that's not something that we could do right now, we could hold on to that. The cost estimating of twelve thousand, one hundred, that'd be something that I think is just, I'd have to talk with par a little further on. So if you wanted to authorize me today not to exceed, I could go back, or we can hold this. So, I would...
Yeah, not to exceed what?
Not to exceed the fifty thousand dollars that was previously allocated for public safety.
Okay, so, so you need a motion to, okay.
And not to exceed fifty thousand dollars for DPW.
One quick question, Mr. Administrator, because I'm looking at what we have in Fund Six Fifty. We obviously have fifty thousand that has not been expended. And then we also have the six, was it six hundred thousand for DPW? Where is the number?
It's, it's in...
That's six forty, hang on. It may not be in this report.
What do you look?
No, the public safety feasibility is the one, Jared, is DPW Recycling, Recycling Center, so we have six hundred and fifty thousand that has been held for the recycling center.
You know what I'm going to do, Mr. President, members of the council? I'd ask you to hold this.
Okay.
You know what, because what I'd prefer to do is, I have a question about this twelve thousand dollars. Also, I'd like to have Tim Thies, our contracted engineer that you know, he handled the landfill, he's the one who put this together. So this way, he, I have questions now, I'd like him to come in front of us, so this way the council can ask questions, the public can hear about this, we're in no rush, I know, but get, definitely, we can put it on the next agenda when Tim is available, so this way we can have an interchange.
Okay.
And then we can take a look at what funds are actually available, so we can set it up right.
So I'd like to...
The fact that you didn't get the backup, that's on me, so, but we can hold it to the next meeting.
I'd like to entertain a motion to continue item J to the next regularly scheduled council meeting. Motion been made and seconded. Any further discussion? Sorry. No worries. Hearing none, all in favor.
Thank you.
This will be on, this will be on our next regularly scheduled meeting.
We need to separate them.
Yeah.
We need to separate you two.
Alright, so next item on the agenda is discussion impossible vote to allocate an amount not to exceed seven thousand, five hundred dollars from council contingency to pay for an archaeologist's study on town-owned property in the planned development park. I put this on the agenda, it's apropos because Counselor Comito is looking for some information related to Longplex later on. I became aware that at, during the master plan approval process for the Iceplex, it was entered into the record by someone who was not certified as an expert, that there may or may not be some...
Rocks.
Rocks that have some significance to Native American heritage. And I look at it this way, we haven't closed on the land yet, this is still technically our property. This is not a contingency that Mr. Long went through in his initial Longplex build. Mr. Long did not go through this in the process for the Car Barn Land, he has not gone through this in the process for the land in which he is gonna do a hotel. I think we are setting a dangerous precedent, and I have some significant questions as to how this was entered into the record at the planning board level and when the decision was made, because in reviewing the footage, it seems like this was already prepared by our consultant planner as one of the conditions to finalize the master plan approval piece at the meeting. So, I'm glad that Mr. Romano's here, because he attends and has a wealth of knowledge on these things. Counselor DiMedeiras.
My concern about all of this is this land's been for sale for, I don't know, twenty years, and we've had sales and purchase on this land in the past, and no one has brought up these rocks. And I also, and I asked attorney Marcelo, this is pri, this is town-owned land, but it's not public land. It's not used for recreation or any, no one is really allowed to walk around there, it's dangerous to walk around there, I've walked around there with, yes, but, but I've had permission with the engineer once. I don't see how someone can go onto this land and apparently brought a consultant onto this land without the town council knowing, and the planning board just took this as face value. And I just wonder why, when we've had sales and purchases on this land in the past, this has never been brought up. And it does set a bad precedent, because does this mean that any private land, somebody could go over there and see a wall and bring an archaeologist onto a privately-owned land, and then go to the planning board and say, well, the Indians might have built that? This is a lot of expense for people who own these properties. I have, if this has to be done, I don't think we should put it on Mr. Long, he has not bought this property yet, it's our property, but I do have an objection on how this was all done.
Counselor Comito.
Yeah, I, one hundred percent agree. Not only have we tried to do this with a, with a wall, another development going in town, we tried to do it with an owl in a silo. So, I just think we're a little over the top when we're trying to stop or slow down development, and I think it's very important that these big decisions come through the council, or at least we're aware of what's going on.
Because I don't think we knew that this was going on, that somebody went on the property and found these rocks, before it happened, no one told us. And to me, I don't think that should have happened.
I would also echo, I do think that there, I mean, obviously, this land is, the terrain is rough, you know, Mr. Long knows what he's buying, but it does pose a safety hazard, and if we have individuals just willy-nilly walking through this area looking for artifacts, puts the town in potential legal liability. Somebody twists their ankle and gets hurt, or, you know...
Not only that, John, I think our boards and commissions have a responsibility to answer to the town administrator...
Yes.
And what their plan is. And, and just to take things and go without even talking to the administrator, I think is, from our boards and commissions, is completely wrong, on a matter like this.
But was this done as the head of the historic commission?
I can tell you that Ms. Anderson presented some evidence to the planning board for it to make a policy decision, after she and whomever it was that she went out to this property to view these stone mounds with. Planning board was presented with that evidence prior to the meeting, excuse me, and that's why Ms. Sweet had included as a potential condition for the board to consider that in her draft decision, and then for the board to make that policy decision itself, based on its prior, prior experience and requiring other applicants to do similar PAL studies.
Which, which would cause another setback, another delay for everything to move forward, correct?
I don't, I can't agree that it would necessarily create a setback or delay, because there are a number of items that an applicant must do to present its application.
But we can't, we can't sell the land now unless we do this.
Counselor Burke.
So, Todd, under state law or planning boards, what role would the council play in this process or not play? Because the planning, the planning commission really has a lot of authority that is vested with them that we can't interfere with.
Correct, and I think what the council president is proposing, because the town still owns this property... property, is to pay for this study to be conducted to facilitate the sale.
Correct.
Out of our council contingency.
Yes.
Correct. It's an unfortunate scenario that we find ourselves in, that this, again, came out of left field and--
Second.
So, all right, so Counselor Comito, any other councils like to say anything, or I can go ahead and make the motion? All right, I'm going to make a motion that we approve an amount not to exceed seventy-five hundred dollars from council contingency to pay for this archaeologist's study on the land still owned by the town in the Planned Development Park.
Second.
To facilitate the sale.
Second.
Two seconds.
Two seconds. All right, any further discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor. Mr. Ford had questions as to whether or not we were business friendly. All right. Next item on the agenda is Counselor DiMederos, Discussion Impossible Vote to Approve Resolution Twenty Twenty-Five Double-Oh Thirty-Five Supporting the Restoration of General Revenue Sharing to Cities and Towns. Counselor.
This was on our consent agenda last week, and we all agreed to have the attorney do one for us. Is this all right with everyone? So I will make a motion to approve Resolution Twenty Twenty-Five dash zero zero three five Supporting the Restoration of General Revenue Sharing to City and Towns.
Second.
Motion made in second. Any further discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor. Okay. Next item on the agenda is Counselor DiMederos, again, with a Discussion Impossible Vote to Approve Resolution Twenty Twenty-Five Double-Oh Thirty-Six in Support of Preserving the Name, Significance, and Observance of the Victory Day Holiday.
Same thing. This was on our consent agenda last week.
Mr. President, I'm sorry, I believe there's one error in this. I just wanted to point out--
No, I just proposed that this be done. Go ahead, Todd.
Are we speaking about the one which we just approved?
No.
The Victory Day--
The fourth whereas, as the Westerly Town Council, I think that was intended to be the Tiverton Town Council.
Yeah.
Correct.
Yeah. So I make a motion to approve the Resolution Twenty Twenty-Five Zero Zero Three Six in Support of Preserving the Name, Significance, and Observance of the Victory Day Holiday.
As amended, or as suggested amendments by the solicitor. Okay, any further discussion? Counselor Burke.
I'll agree with it. I just hope that others outside of this council nationally will take to heart the second whereas. Our job is not to erase history, but to preserve it and educate our citizens, because there's too much of that happening these days nationally.
Okay, any further discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor.
I'll be right back.
Unopposed. All right. Next item on the agenda is Counselor Paul, Discussion Impossible Vote to Advertise a Public Hearing on Tiverton Code of Ordinance, Chapter Seventy-Eight, Traffic and Vehicles, Section Seventy-Eight dash Thirty-Seven F Related to the Installation of a Four-Way Stop Sign at the Intersection of Wampanoag and Gatsby Lane Per Police Chief Costa's Recommendation. Counselor.
Mr. President, it's self-explanatory. If the chief wants to speak up, that is fine. There were several residents of the area that were complaining of traffic issues. In full disclosure, even when this initially came to me, I thought this was neighbors ratting on neighbors. Apparently, that is not the case. Has to do with the farmer's market and softball as well.
Chief.
I believe that the farmer's market does create some parking issues on the side roads that are over there, or possibly other people in town that are using this area to turn around, or if they get lost, kind of redirect themselves. As we know, Wampanoag and Gatsby is a residential neighborhood, and when it was brought to my attention, I couldn't recall the last time that we were down there for a violation or an accident. I did have Lieutenant Yuba go down and speak to the person who initially made the complaint, and I had Lieutenant Ledoux from Community Policing go down and follow up, who conducted a traffic survey and old-school knocked on doors and spoke to neighbors. And they do have some legitimate concerns. I think that there's been quite a bit of turnover in that neighborhood with new drivers, people selling their homes, so there's new people to that area. I am not objecting to this request, and the survey does support that the neighbors in that area would appreciate this.
Okay. Counselor Perry.
I happen to be down there for that pickleball opening a couple of weeks ago, and one of the residents that lived across the street, she would also like to see, I didn't know this was going to be on here until I read it, a crosswalk put in there. And I know it's a state road, correct?
Yes.
And I told her to contact DOT to find out if that could happen. She'd also like to see, I guess, when you're coming from Gray's Ice Cream down towards center of Tiverton, it's a thirty mile an hour. And then it, just before there, it turns to thirty-five. She would like to see it kept at thirty, all the way past the town farm area. But that, I believe that was all DOT that would have to do that.
Yes, sir.
And I explained that to her, and she was going to call in and put in that request.
So we can evaluate that, sir, when it comes in front of me.
Good. Thank you.
All right. So do we have a motion to advertise for the public hearing as listed by the council vice president?
So moved.
Second. Motion made in second. Any further discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor. Thank you, Chief.
Thank you.
Next item on the agenda, Counselor Janik would like to schedule a workshop with Historic Preservation Advisory Board to discuss the demolition ordinance. Counselor Janik.
Can I actually, I'd like to continue this, because the people at the state level are still reviewing the pending ordinance.
Okay. So do we have a motion to, would you like to do the next council, next meeting or the meeting after?
Let's do the one after.
Okay. So we're going to continue this to the second meeting in November. Counselor Comito.
So the ordinance that we had in front of us being reviewed by the state, is that what you just said?
By the state historical people--
Okay.
--to give us some feedback before they would come here.
And just as a point, I was going to say, it's November twenty-fourth. It's ever so close to my birthday. And also Thanksgiving, the most important holiday. All right. So next item on the agenda, Counselor Comito, Discussion and Update on Building Permit for Long Plex Car Barn and General Permitting Process. Counselor Comito.
Yes, so obviously, I put this on the agenda, because I don't believe we have a permit in place for the car barn yet. So just hearing all sorts of different rumors throughout the town on why we don't have a permit, or why something is being held up, or everything's completed, so I'm just trying to get an update to see where we are with the process, what the process is, and what's actually stopping the process and the permit from going forward. So I don't know who wants to stop or--
Would the solicitor or-- The administrator's going to dive into it.
A foundation permit, I believe is what you're referring to, Mr. Comito, has not--
Yes.
--has not been issued, because it cannot be issued under state law and case law supporting the same. To issue such would be, or by the building official, would be outside of the scope of his authority per case law. So let me give you a little history just about this project, right? This first came to the mass, to the planning board, excuse me, on March twelfth, two thousand twenty-five as a pre-application. It then received master plan approval on July first, two thousand twenty-five. We'll step back for one second. It submitted its master plan application on May twenty-sixth, received master plan approval on July first, two thousand twenty-five. It required a zone change to allow this use. We have since received submissions for the preliminary plan application dated September ten, September twenty-five, October two, three, seven, twenty, and twenty-two. The application, the preliminary plan application has now been certified complete, is on the November sixth planning board agenda for hearing, or technically, it's called a public meeting now under the general laws, same genesis. And until the project receives final plan approval, the project cannot submit a complete building plan application. General law is very specific in that it requires--
It's in the confidential.
So Rhode Island, the general law that we're referring to, I assume, is New Billings and Structures, twenty-three dash twenty-seven. Is that the one we're referring to?
Twenty-three dash twenty-seven--
One fourteen seven?
Well, one fourteen point seven, it's very specific to the foundation permit.
Exactly.
But you can't get a foundation permit, as the statute says, until you file your building permit.
I, I don't read it. Issue--
One fourteen point seven says, when an application and all documents necessary for the issuance of a permit to erect or add to a building or other structure have been filed, as required by twenty-three dash twenty-seven point three dash one thirteen point five. And it goes on.
So the building, a building official filed a letter back in September saying that he reviewed all the plans and didn't see an issue with giving a foundation permit?
I'm not aware of that letter, Mr. Comito. I know that there is a letter dated October twenty.
Yep, I have that one also.
Saying that a foundation permit will not be issued at this time. We must also remember that, that there are six lots right now there that are not merged.
Which, my understanding about that was that the planning asked him to do that at master plan approval. Is that correct, or is that--
It's always been, generally, when plans have multiple lots, it's a condition of final plan approval that there be an administrative subdivision of those lots.
So who approves the merge?
So the merger is basically a stroke of the pen, because we know that he was buying all these lots to begin with.
I don't think it's fair to just say it's a stroke of the pen. There's more that goes into reviewing--
So what is the procedure to merge?
An administrative subdivision application has to be filed. I understand that has been done--
That's been done.
--last week. The planning officer has fifteen days to certify that application complete, and then has fifteen days to approve the administrative subdivision. But that alone does not resolve this issue. Still have to have final plan approval in order to receive a building permit. You cannot file for a building permit, you cannot get a foundation permit.
The way I watch the meetings, Todd, to be honest, is it seems like something changes at every planning meeting, or there's a piece of information missing, or we need another letter from the water department. It just seems like we have a TRC, and when Mr. Long goes up in front of the board in the TRC, it seems like there's nothing but a problem or a fight, or it's always something that comes up where he's got to go back and get more information, or something changes in the planning. It's just all over the place. And it looks, perception is, we are not business friendly at all.
I can understand where you're coming from, Mr. Comito, but the planning board and the planning office has worked very diligently at trying to respond to Mr. Long's multiple submissions. I have not attended the TRCs. I think what you're referring to is the last planning board meeting on September ninth, at which time, on the agenda was both a request to modify master plan approval for street legal, as well as to waive certain checklist items. We were prepared to do that, I believe, or the planning board was prepared to do that. Those requests were withdrawn by Mr. Long's counsel.
But it was almost after the advice that you gave him to withdraw it, Todd.
Absolutely, no.
You were, you were going down that path, and you wanted them to withdraw it. I watched the meeting.
I completely disagree with that, Mr. Comito. I went through each item to confirm that they actually wanted to withdraw that request. I tried to suggest in every way possible not to, by going through each of those items. That was their decision.
So what's the holdup now?
There is no holdup. There's a preliminary plan, public meeting scheduled for November sixth, the next agenda, the next regular scheduled meeting. Because, because we just, the planning board had just received items on October twenty-second, giving it just enough time to issue the notice required.
So I have a question as it relates to this, if you'll indulge me, counselors. So for a, for a foundation permit, right, is the only thing that was standing in the way, the merger of those lots? Because obviously, you can't have a foundation across multiple lots. Am I correct? Or is it, there's additional items that need to be filed, because state law says you can't get any permits until everything is all done?
Have to have final plan approval.
Got it. So hypothetically speaking--
And if Mr. Long disagrees, he's welcome to file an appeal to your, to your state building code or your building code commission.
Okay. So hypothetically speaking, let's take his project to the side. If somebody were to come in and buy, like, Mr. DeMello, right? He bought six lots. So if he was going to put a building up, and he's not going to put a building up, because he's going to use it for storage. But if he was going to put a building up, before he could get a foundation permit, all six of those lots need to be merged together to become one lot, to delineate where the foundation can go.
That's step one.
That's step one. But in that instance, would the applicant be able to get said foundation permit and be able to at least do the foundation work while they go through the rest of the process? Or is it--
No, they would need final plan approval. And part of that, Mr. President, is because they have to have the EM permits, right? Delineating wetlands, for example. Ripdys permits.
Which, in place. Ripdys was in place, right?
I don't--
The EM required them to put the drainage pipe in, that everybody's arguing about. It was done because it was a requirement.
I don't believe they have received those approvals, Mr. Comito. At the last planning board meeting, it was represented that they had not received the EM approvals. If that has changed, I don't know.
I guess I don't know either. Then I mean, you told two different stories, either from Mr. Long, or from the planning, or from whatever. But I think a simple foundation permit, I think, I personally think the law allows you to have a simple foundation permit. It says, that law says that the owners risk of owning the foundation.
Yeah. That they made, the risk that they may not receive a building permit. Not that, not at the risk that they might not receive final plan approval from the town, which puts the town in a precarious situation if it does approve that foundation permit prior.
Mr. President--
Counselor.
Quick question. While we're reading the statute, you also reference case law. So that statute is also backed up by various case laws that support the position that you're describing.
The case law specifically states that a building official who issued a building permit prior to final plan approval or the approval necessary from the planning board was ultravarious, meaning the building official acted outside of the scope of his authority.
And in that situation, if I believe, if I remember right, they had to go back and redo it? Didn't the court say that the work that had been done had to go back and be reconsidered?
I don't recall specifically, Mr. Burke.
I think it's in here.
The point is, building official issuing a permit, a building permit, before final approvals had been received was ultravarious.
And I say that, because I know it's easy to go in and look at a statute, but you also have to know the context within that statute after courts have reviewed it and said, well, no, it doesn't mean this, it means that. And I think that's what you're describing.
Yeah, it's right here.
Counselor Perry.
Let's say I come in with a preliminary plan. First step, correct?
It depends on the, so many things have changed.
I have a project coming in, sitting before the planning board, first time. From then until the final, what's normal timeframe?
It really depends on the size of the project and the work that has to, the planning that has to be done.
Building a house would be a lot shorter than building a car.
Building a house, building a single-family house doesn't even come before the planning board.
That's true. I'm sorry, that's--
That's why you can get a foundation permit in days, probably.
This isn't a major project. This is not a major, this is--
Well, it is classified as a major land development project.
But it's really, it's, at the end of the day, it's a still building, holding some cars in it. And where, the process either needs to be fixed, or needs to be changed, or we need to--
With state law, right?
Right, or we need to spell it out for whoever's coming to town.
It's spelled out, it's in the general laws.
Todd, we leave meetings at a planning board, we leave planning board meetings, and you have lawyers standing out in the hallway saying that this isn't a business-friendly town. There's got to be a better way to do this.
They are welcome to talk to me about--
I know, but there's got to be a way, I mean, Mr. Perry has heard it, I've heard it. There's got to be a better way of doing this, because this is, I wouldn't want to build in this town if I had to. I mean, we're spending, he's got hundreds of thousands of dollars tied up, and at every intersection, there's a problem.
Mr. Comito, as I just told you, this, this project was just introduced as a pre-application in March of this year. The planning board received the first application, the master plan application, on May twenty-sixth, approved that project on July first. It didn't receive anything until September ten. So I don't, I don't understand, and I shouldn't be going down this path too much, of trying to defend the planning board, but there were months there that aren't on the town's responsibility.
So the bottom line is, this will be heard at the November sixth, or whenever you said--
November sixth.
--meeting. And if Mr. Long has everything that's required, it should be passed.
They can make a decision.
They can make a decision.
They are welcome to make a decision.
They can make a decision whether they pass it or not, but, but, but if everything is in by November 6th.
Everything is in to meet the requirements for the application to be certified so the hearing can go forward.
Is it in now?
Hasn't been certified. It has been certified.
All right, so November.
As of when?
As of October 22nd, when we received the last piece of information from Mr. Long.
Which was last Friday, correct?
Yes.
Wednesday, it was Wednesday, whatever that date was last week. I think it was the 22nd.
It was, it was the 22nd.
If I can just say, the planning board doesn't subjectively say yes or no. The planning board has very strict laws they have to follow and very strict criteria and it's changed in the last, like, year, two, it's, it's changed.
Past two years, there have been a lot of changes to accelerate things.
The last two years, so, and just saying that I've passed something in, Craig, it has to meet certain state criteria. Specific information needs to be delivered with the application.
And how many times do we have to hear, I'm one-sixth of a person, I don't know if I can get that done. It's, it's, it's not really, we, we hired a firm to do our, to be our planner and, and we always get feedback as, when you watch the meetings, I don't know if I'm going to have time to do that. I don't, I'm only one-sixth of a person. I, I got 15 days to do this. We, we, we have big investments and a lot of tax money that's being tied, tied up and it doesn't, to me, it doesn't seem like we're business friendly and we're helping this process along. It's my personal opinion, you, you can agree to disagree, but it's just, there's something at every avenue that Mr. Long is jumping through hoops.
And I will say that our planner, she, she is on tight timelines, but she always gets it done. She always, she always meets that time requirement.
We've, and, we are actively trying to find a plan for, I don't know how long now, two, three years? Yeah. And we've, I, I mean, we are actively doing, I, I know that the administrator right now is actively.
Yes.
Trying to find somebody.
We, we need you to get an occupancy certified letter to the, to the project three different times because we kept changing the numbers all the way, all the way across.
What are you talking about?
Three times.
On this?
On, 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 on the carbon. The occupancy numbers had changed three times and you had to get, every time that number changed, Mr. Long had to go back and get another letter from North Tiverton Water saying that they could accommodate the project. Three times.
My, my understanding of that, Mr. Comito, is that the project went to the water district initially with its own number. At the master plan hearing, it was discussed how they had, how the project had to work with the fire chief and with the building official to determine what the actual occupancy number would be. And at the last TRC meeting, September 9th, I believe it was, they agreed to what that number would be. Why the project went earlier or multiple times earlier, I cannot explain that. That was on them.
So if I could interject here, um, because I think I, I can relate to Counselor Comito and probably everybody else here, having received calls from constituents who are notably upset at the process that they saw during these meetings, um, I think we're really talking about two different issues here at the same time. You know, issue number one is obviously the process has changed from the state, it's very unclear, we have to follow a definitive process. I know Mr. Romano's job is to keep the planning board out of legal jeopardy, but on the same token, you know, we as a council actively moved to sell this property, to get this business up and running. And when I personally watch the meetings, it doesn't appear that we have a very customer or customer service centric stance about us, right? I think that's where Counselor Comito expressed frustrations at some of the remarks that have been made. So, you know, at the very least, I think there's an opportunity for us to, you know, maybe take a step back at some point. I know we have more projects coming, um, and make sure that we're always doing what we can to facilitate these projects, especially as Counselor Comito mentioned, there's a significant amount of tax dollars that this town desperately needs in commercial property.
The tax dollars, this is a good project for the town.
Good project for the town.
Both of them.
Yeah.
And we're probably just hoping to lose in one of them.
On multiple levels, this is a good project for the town. This is obviously something that the council is behind because we all voted, well, some of the council is behind, uh, because the majority of the council voted to, to sell the land. Um, you know, I for one would like to see it move forward and do so expeditiously. And if that means ultimately we need to lobby our delegation at the state level to find some efficiencies, I'm all for it.
We try.
Because it wouldn't, it wouldn't impact, it, it's not just one applicant we're talking about here, there's other projects that could be in town with a meaningful impact to not just, you know, the character of the town, but also the end tax dollar revenue, so. Counselor Perry.
I would just like to say one thing, that every time I did receive a complaint about this project going forward, I went to who I'm supposed to go to and I was the town administrator. And last Friday, we actually spent time in the planning office with Ed, I believe his name is. And that's how this email that came up, everyone came about. You know, we went in there and we said, listen, what's holding up this project? And that was, I gotta give him credit, um, he's doing a fantastic job. And every time I go to him, we get the answer, or at least I get the answer. So, again, I think we should all follow that rule. If you have a question.
And I also went to him this week.
Go to the guy that's supposed to answer him, and no one else. Thank you.
Done.
All right, Counselor Jim Madiris.
So the bottom line is, everything's in and you're having a meeting November 6th.
On the preliminary plan application, there still has to be a final plan application after.
All right, so tell me what happens then? So the preliminary will be done?
Preliminary plan application, if that's approved, final plan is usually, and by statute now, administrative.
Okay.
Unless there's something that changes significantly in the plan and then it would have to be reviewed by the planning board.
Again?
For final plan. That's only if something significantly changes between what is approved for preliminary plan and what's submitted for final plan.
So Jim, don't change anything after November 6th?
What's the typical timeframe on that? So the planning board gives their final approval and then it's administrative after that?
Final, final, the preliminary plan decision is issued, 20-day appeal period after that, submit the final plan application. Uh, testing my memory as to what the timeframe is, but I think it's 15 days to review that for determination of completeness and probably 15 days at least to grant or deny that final plan approval.
So let me ask you this question because obviously we're talking about appeal. So the appeal would come from an abutter or, you know?
An aggrieved party.
An aggrieved party. So Joe Smith walking down Main Road could be an aggrieved party?
Generally aggrieved parties are abutters.
Okay.
But I say aggrieved party because that's what the general law says and it does not find it just as being an abutter.
Counselor Comito.
Yes, so, I mean, I, I also agree with Mr. Perry just said, so my concerns, just like you, when I have them, I go see the town administrator and we have great conversations of this whole process as far as what he believes, his answers are that he's getting from either Mr. Long's lawyer or, well, basically from Mr. Long's lawyer, the conversations that they have, right? So, I, I, what, what I talk to Mr. Long, I don't, I don't get the opportunity to talk to his lawyer, um, but it, it, it seems like the paperwork's put in or the process is put forward, something else comes out, changes, moves forward, so, um, my point is, is that I've had great conversations with the administrator and he does do a good job of trying to keep this all under control, but I, if this process is wrong, we need to come up with a streamlined process. And I hate to bring this up, I, I do inspections in Portsmouth and I, and I watch their meetings and I watch their TRCs. It's very organized. One or two meetings, they're done and they're out, approvals go through, boom, they take a vote and it's done. We dragged this out for weeks upon weeks upon weeks.
Mr. Comito, just let me say this. We had one meeting on the master plan application and it was approved. Mr. Long just submitted all the required elements by the checklist as of October 22nd and we have a meeting on November 6th. I, I, I don't know what else to do.
So, so it's, Mr. Long's not doing what he's, according to you, Mr. Long's not doing what he's supposed to be doing?
There's a checklist of items that they are supposed to submit. We have a certification of completeness that is issued for each phase and this one shows the multiple submissions by Mr. Long and the town's responses.
Okay, so it's Mr. Long's fault? He doesn't have a.
And to reiterate, on September 9th, they withdrew their request to waive certain checklist items.
So, let me ask one follow-up point because the, is there any case law in this aggrieved party piece? I, I guess my question would be is do we have to wait out the whole 20 days or can, you know, as basically the abutters, could we waive that period?
The appeal period is 20 days and that's, the application can't be submitted until after the 20 days.
All right, so that clock is, that clock is hard and fast.
Yes.
Yeah. I'm just asking, listen, I'm not an expert, you know, you're the land use guy.
You're in my mind.
So. Any, any further discussion items on this? I don't want to belabor it any longer.
If I may make a suggestion to the council, knowing that I speak with Long's attorney several times a week. Allow me to give you updates, not just on Mr. Long's project, but any major land development going forward, knowing what we're facing, knowing everybody knows with Parkins, with Longplex. I think it would be a good idea to kind of like Counselor Comito's saying, that knowing that the town is talking about this and members are, your constituents are talking back to you, so I, we can put an agenda item going forward, just to keep an open eye, to talk about what updates, planning board issues, anything that you have interest in or constituents are talking to you about that we can discuss. And if necessary, you know, I can bring that information back from the planning board or the planning board chair or whomever is bringing that information forward. So you can hear it and also that the public can hear it.
Yeah, I, I think that would be wonderful, Mr. Administrator, because quite frankly, I am not a land use attorney and I do my best to not pay attention to what's going on in the planning board meetings because they're very boring, but.
I have a, I think Mike's going to ask the question before we do anything else.
You were talking.
Everybody's all fired up here.
Everybody's talking.
I'm not trying to interrupt you. I was.
So, all I was, all that to say is, I think the updates would be helpful for us so that we know at least when constituents call us, what's going on.
I only caution and I leave this to Todd and Mike and you, is how detailed would that agenda item have to be each time?
Yeah, absolutely. I would make sure that anything would be approved by either Attorney Marcel or Attorney Romano.
And it would be on the agenda what the subject was, because I think that would be the problem.
Would the council like to hear from Mr. Riley? He's very fired up.
Um, I, do we need, do we need to?
I'll be honest, what I'm not interested in doing is rehashing what belongs to the planning board. I've heard Mr. Comito's concerns, I appreciate Mr. Comito's concerns and other concerns, but our job is not to take the role of the planning board.
I, I completely agree, we shouldn't be in the weeds on the planning board because they're a quasi judicial entity, entity and.
I'll just bring it forward, the complaints that I'm getting, right? I, I mean, as far as, as far as.
Your complaints are the same ones I'm hearing.
The, the water department director is telling me he tried to put paperwork into the planning board for so many weeks and that hasn't got a response. So, I, I don't know what to say.
And I appreciate what you, what you. And I think what we're trying to do, just so the council knows, and you already know this, um, we're dealing with different entities here. When it comes to not only the planning board, the building office, zoning official, the fire department, DPW, the police department, you have every single department head working on various projects, not only Mr. Long's. So, and no disrespect to Ms. Sweet, but she does, she does, she does a good job, but we are actively looking for a planner and she makes herself available to us, but do we want a planner in that office all the time? Of course we do. Or we want to be advertising for it. And I think that is part of what is missing. Sweet makes herself available to us whenever we need her, but to physically have a planner, that someone can come in and sit down and say, I want to build X in the town of Tiverton. It would be the planner's job to set up that TRC, to set up those informal meetings, to put together all the department heads. So a developer does not have to go individually to department heads. And then if I'm talking to the police chief as a developer and he gives me a tacit approval for something, then I go back to the planning board and say, well, the police chief said it was okay. Well, the police chief never said it was okay. Or the building official didn't say it was okay. So I think that is what we're dealing with now, that we've come from development that has been unprecedented in this town. And has it caught us a little flat footed? Yes, it has. Are we getting better? Yes, we are. Are we going to continue to make mistakes? I hope not, but obviously we're going to. We obviously want businesses and development in our community. But are we doing it in such a way that it could disenfranchise somebody? People are talking about it. I think what needs to happen is those complaints, and I know you all do a good job bringing forward, they have to come through me, they have to come through the solicitor and you, Councilor, you do a great job of doing that. Um, all the councilors do. So, I mean, with that, I can understand the frustrations, but are we going to get better? Are we trying to do a better job? Of course we are. And we will continue to do that. Do I think one missing piece? And again, I'll keep saying it, no disrespect to Ms. Sweet, is that Tiverton is not employing their own planner in an office? Yes, it is a bit of a handicap. I hope to have that addressed soon in the future. We're actively working on it, it was one of the things that I started working on when I became the administrator. And I think that that will help this process moving forward. So I guess it's about patience, but I also understand that patience costs time and it costs money. And I recognize that. And I know that with the developers that we have in town that are lined up, I know they work with the planning board and the men and women who serve on the planning board are professionals. They do great work as volunteers, all of them do. But now it is trying, I think that missing piece, and I'll keep saying it, is having that conductor of our orchestra, having that planner in that office so he can coordinate with our attorneys, can coordinate with the public, with the developers and all our department heads, so we can avoid issues of frustration like we're here talking about.
Okay. So at the, at the risk of belaboring the point, I know Attorney Riley has been standing for a moment and I personally would like to hear a brief statement from Mr. Riley so we can conclude this matter.
Thank you, Mr. President and members of the council, Daniel Riley, counsel for Street Legal. I understand this is not the planning board, we're not going to discuss anything that would otherwise be before the planning board. As far as process goes, since the council's heard about that, I feel like I have an obligation to clear the air on some of the things that have been said. I'm not looking to litigate the issue of the permit, of the foundation permit that Mr. Long is seeking. I certainly do not agree with the solicitor's assessment, but this is not the forum to have that debate and I'm not going to have it here. We have filed to merge those lots so that we believe we are legally entitled to get a limited foundation permit to begin work. That is an administrative process, as the solicitor had mentioned, and we hope that that's handled expeditiously since that all of these lots are contained in the same zoning district, there aren't any, aren't any complicating factors. As far as what the solicitor said regarding the process, the last meeting, the waiver of certain conditions and our submission of materials as late as October 22nd, we submitted those materials a week prior. We went back and forth with the water district on a will serve letter that we did not receive until the 22nd. That is an item that is not even required until preliminary plan approval. And part of the confusion is that the planning board simultaneously required it as both a checklist item and as a condition of master plan approval. And I'm not going to bore the council with the distinction in the process issues that causes, but that requires us to race to get documents filed that we don't have in our possession and we cannot compel someone to produce. And further complicating that issue, and this goes to the occupancy issue, is that we had an engineer and architect and the fire marshal arrive at three different numbers for occupancy for this building. Now, the fire marshal and the architect were off by one, so we'll consider that one. They were all planning to different standards. The water department had, the water district has looked at those plans and has seen that nothing has changed. And they argued with us, not in an, in an adversarial way, but they were asking us for several weeks, why do you need paperwork from us? Nothing has changed, we've already approved your water usage. And we said, the planning board's requiring more paperwork on this. Now, I understand the planning board is a paperwork-driven process, but at some point it becomes absurd. And at some point, the absurdities drive time delays. And here is why those time delays are a problem. We're going into the winter months. It is not impossible to pour concrete in winter, but it becomes very expensive to do so. And that is why my client was intending to seek a limited foundation permit, so that work could begin while the rest of the planning board process concluded, hopefully resulting in final plan approval and building permits, and then construction can happen in winter. That is part of the reason why everything was, was sped up. Now, I will say from a process perspective, yes, state law has changed, but the town does have a lot they can improve. And I have been in discussions with the administrator on this, and he's very proactive in reaching out to me when there are issues at the planning board and other levels. But the checklists need a lot of work, they contradict each other in parts, they're legally incorrect in other parts, and they use the wrong terminology in other parts. The planning board does not utilize the portal for submissions, which creates this issue where you have multiple submissions over many periods of days. It sounds like we never got anything in that was correct, when in fact, that's an iterative part of the process. When staff is coming back and saying, I see you provided X, we need to see something else on it, that's fine, that's not a problem for staff. But now it looks like there are all these other emails, and then 36 copies of that same document being filed. It's a mess. The state provided a portal, and they provided funding to onboard the planning department onto that portal, which we are not using. That, that then created another problem, because at the September 9th meeting, the infamous September 9th meeting, we had an issue related to DPW approval of a drainage pipe in the town's drainage unit on Progress Road. Now, I do not see how that is within the jurisdiction of the planning board, that is a separate issue. But the problem arose, because my client obtained verbal permission from the prior DPW director to install this pipe, which is required for a DEM permit, which was granted. The new DPW director came in, and the work began after he started. He was not aware of it, he didn't know what it was, and so we had to go back and forth with him. There's no paper application for a permit or approval through him. So, there's no written track record, there never could have been one, there's nothing in the portal saying, go to DPW, get approval for a drainage pipe, which is all this was. All the while, DEM is telling us, you need this here, so it was installed. That is the source of the infamous drainage pipe, but that led to a 15-minute-long soliloquy with the solicitor that then painted a very negative picture in light, in front of the planning board, that we were circumventing town regulations, when in fact, we were following the letter of the law from DEM. That didn't help us. We were further complicated by the fact that the agenda was incorrect, and the planning board chairman rightfully was very confused as to what we were asking for, because what was on paper was not actually what I had filed to request. It made it seem like we wanted all of these items waived until final plan approval, which would, as the planning board chair rightfully said, take all of that away from the planning board and solely into the hands of the part-time planner, it made no sense. I had asked for, prior to final plan submission, I had asked for those items that we were waiting on to be given to the planning board after our preliminary plan hearing, so that they could just, they may not even grant preliminary plan approval at that meeting, but before we submit for our final plan, they would have that information. That's not what the planning board has asked to request. And then we withdrew our, our, our waivers for the master plan modification and for checklist items, because the planning board didn't know at that point what was going on, the agenda didn't make any sense, and yes, as the solicitor indicated, he's correct, we went through the checklist items line by line, we had all of that in place. We still had all of that in place. It should not have prevented a certificate of completeness from being granted several days later, but that did not happen, we only received that last week. And so, this process has gone on all over the place. And half the time, folks, we're waiting on wastewater, on the water district, on the fire marshal, on DPW, on town departments. And understandably, they have to provide their input, but when we talk about a three-month delay over, less than three-month delay over the summer between meetings, it's because we're waiting on a hydrology study to be performed by par. That wasn't us sitting on our, on our hands, just waiting to, because we wanted to push this longer, that's what we're waiting on. Uh, we had a high, the study was done for this project. We have the water usage in that letter for this project, and also for the other two conceptual projects. Uh, we can't speak to any other projects beyond that, but... Correct, it seems like if you're before the planning board, everyone's working on a hydrology study these days. But I just wanted to clear there again, I'm not looking to litigate the issue of the permit, which is currently an issue. Uh, and we're certainly not here seeking approval of anything that's before the planning board. But since the council's brought up the process, I thought it was important the council understand the process and the issues we have faced. And there are process improvements that can and should be made. I've been, the solic, the administrator, whether he wants to be a sounding board or not, is, when I tell him, you know, here's my, my free consultant report for you on the following five things that should be done in my opinion, but because we just want to see this go through, we want to see every checkbox checked, we want to see every rule followed, and we want to see the project completed. Thank you.
Thank you.
May I address, I'm not going to belabor it, the portal?
Yes.
Town, all towns are required now to move to the portal by a certain date. The planning office is working with the state to make that happen, I think, within the next month. Checklist items, Mr. Riley indicated, some are, are not, we cannot require those as a part of the checklist for the application. And as he knows as well, because it's in writing, those which have been moved to final plan by state law, we've advised them of that, such as DEM permits. Those which state, prior to planning, prior to preliminary plan approval, we did not hold them to. So, there's nothing wrong with the checklist in that sense. And then as to the agenda being incorrect last month, it was correct.
Okay, thank you. Last item on the agenda, Administrator Jones, announcement of new Town Hall business hour scheduled to commence on November 10th, 2025, Monday to Friday, 8:30 a.m. to 4:00 p.m. Mr. Administrator.
Um, thank you, members of the council. This is just, I know, as most of you are aware, the current hours of Town Hall are an extended hour on Wednesday till 6:00 p.m., then a short day at 1:30 on a Friday. And I know that that was a council decision and a policy decision that was made in the past, it was also part of the current AFSMI contract, which allows the town through me, and the council through me, to change the hours at will. Since I've been there, and I know I've spoken to many of the department heads, and just sitting there looking at the activity, I cannot tell you how many mad individuals are who I want to come and do business at Town Hall at 1:45 or 2:00 o'clock on a Friday. Compared to a 6:00 o'clock on a Wednesday night, we're just not seeing the foot traffic, we're not seeing the public. The likelihood that someone has to do business on a Friday after 1:30 is much greater than seeing someone trying to do business at 5:45 on a Wednesday night. So, with that, I've worked with the department heads, the employees have been notified, it was just, you know, obviously, subject to you ratifying this, moving forward. Knowing that in the contract, we can always change it. So, it's in the contract that we can move it back, but it is my strong recommendation, now that we're out of the summer months as well, that we move towards these hours going forward.
Okay, do you need, well, it's not on here for a vote, but I...
It's part of the contract, it's just more of a notification to you and also to the, to the public.
And one, one more item before...
So, I just comment that I think it's a great idea. Being a little bit in construction, I, I get a lot of complaints, hey, I'm trying to get something done 1:30, there's nobody around. A lot of times, people are trying to get it in on a Friday afternoon, but I think that's a great move.
Thank you, sir.
Thank you.
Okay, uh, before I entertain a motion to adjourn, I do want to reiterate again that the new town website is up, and I would encourage anybody who's watching at home to go and take a look at it. It's much more user-friendly, but as always, if there are ways to improve it, please reach out to any of us here or to the administrator. We want to make sure that it's as user-friendly as possible, so. Uh, with that, I'd like to entertain a motion to adjourn. Do I have a second? Second by Counselor Perry, motion by pretty much everyone, all those in favor? Okay, we are now adjourned.